This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, take two. That was just practice. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Warrenville City Council Regular Meeting for Monday, August 2nd, 2021. Have a roll call, please.
Mayor Bremel?
Here we go.
Alderman Ashauer?
Here.
Alderman Berry?
Here.
Alderman Davalos?
Here.
Alderman Goodman?
Here.
Alderman Chrisell?
Here.
Alderman Widener?
Here.
Alderman Wilson? And Alderman Anderson?
Here.
Okay, we have a physical quorum here. Notice was received by a member of the public body in accordance with the City Council's electronic attendance policy, and the member will be deemed authorized to attend the meeting electronically unless a motion objecting to the member's electronic attendance is made and seconded and approved by two-thirds of the members of the public body physically present at the meeting. Does anyone want to make that motion? Seeing no one, then Alderman Anderson, you are in attendance this evening. Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. Would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, on our agenda, we have the oath of office for our new treasurer who is not able to be with us tonight, so we're going to have to defer that until our next meeting. This is the time we set aside for citizens' comments. We have one person signed up this evening, Mr. Bob Seaver?
Altona Chasi. Alderman Crissell.
Bob Seaver, Albright Court. The City Council meeting of February 5th, 2001, something happened that had not happened before that or has not happened since that. The Leonard Store home was up to be demolished. For those of you who don't know what the Leonard Store home was, it was one of two buildings built in 1838. It had pole construction. It had the same hidden underneath the aluminum siding, the original four-inch clapboard. It had all the original ingredients, plus it had all-new furnaces and utilities. A citizens' group came to the meeting to save the building with $100,000. They had $100,000 to purchase the building so it wouldn't be destroyed, and also a plan to have an artist-in-residency program. And this would all be paid for, managed by the citizens. When I spoke with the State Director of Historical Sites in Springfield, he stated that this building was the best historical value in the city of Warrenville. It was the end of a stagecoach line. It was on the original site that it was built, and it had many of the original ingredients and had never been changed on the exterior. To gain and try to attempt to get a 30-day delay, the vote was five to four. We all know what a five-to-four vote is. So the building was taken down, but the director called me and said they will not be able to burn the building down because they have to go through his office in order to burn the building down. He said they will not allow that for a building of this historical value. But it went down. But luckily, the second building, identical building that he had used for his house, the other building was his business that he ran, and he competed with Colonel Warren for the postmaster distribution and for other items within the city. That was moved more than 100 years ago, still stands up on Winfield Road, but it has an addition in the back which reduces the historic value. So I think that if you want to see the statements that were made, you can go to February 8th. Barb Natchke has a fantastic illustration of what occurred, the background on this particular item. But I think in the future, if it ever occurred again, and there probably would not, if groups bring in $100,000, at least it would be worthwhile to delay for 30 days and to obtain additional information. And then, for the record, I believe that the statute that regulates video attendance does not include permanent employment changes that eliminate fiscal attendance.
Thank you. Anyone else? I do not see anyone. Do we have anyone on the line that would like to speak this evening? Hearing none. Do we have any emails ahead of time? None of those also. Okay, thank you. We'll move on then with the meeting to official and staff comments, beginning with the mayor. Several things tonight. Reminder that tomorrow night is National Night Out, one of our signature activities that we've received a number of awards for. A lot of fun, great family activity at Cerny Park, beginning at 5:00 PM, correct, Chief? Free food, a bunch of free stuff, a lot of vendors, a lot of fun. So bring your kids and come on down. The weather's supposed to be perfect. We're looking forward to getting together out at Cerny Park for National Night Out tomorrow evening. This coming weekend, of course, is summer days. We haven't enjoyed summer days for a year or so, so it'd be nice to have that back. That's Friday and Saturday night. If you want details for that, please go to the Park District website. Everything is there, the timing for all of the enjoyment that's on schedule for us there, too. So remember, two things this week, have a little fun right in town, both free events, summer days, and National Night Out. A couple of other things, in accordance with the new guidance from the Centers for Disease Control and the Illinois Department of Public Health, mask-wearing is now strongly recommended within city buildings for everyone, regardless of vaccination status. The city will continue to monitor the information provided by local and state health authorities, as well as the CDC, and make adjustments accordingly. So this is what we have now. And finally, some good news. We have the results from the Mayor's Fitness Challenge this year. There were a total of 82 participants. 65 participants completed the challenge to log at least 1,500 minutes of activity between May 3rd and July 10th. Of these participants, 28 beat the mayor's 28. 28 beat the mayor's total of 3,603, 3,600 minutes. I thought I was doing well. Congratulations to all of you who did better. That's wonderful. Participants who completed the challenge will receive a T-shirt, and those who beat the mayor will receive a specialty T-shirt that I presume says "I beat the mayor," wear that with pride. The following special category winners will receive a certificate for their accomplishments, as well as the T-shirt. And Margie Leonard is here tonight. Margie, welcome. With a total of 9,379 total minutes, qualified for the most minutes overall for a female and most minutes for a female over 51 years of age. I don't believe that, Margie. Congratulations. Larry Brenner, our former treasurer, with 8,275 total minutes, qualified for the most minutes overall for a male and most minutes for a male 51 years of age. Congratulations, Larry. Ellen Seberlich with 6,665 total minutes, qualified for most minutes for a female, 22 to 34 years of age. David Elliott with 5,471 total minutes, qualified for most minutes for a male, 35 to 50 years of age. Michelle Friar with 4,260 total minutes, qualified for most minutes for a female, 35 to 50 years of age. And Phil Ubbison with 1,670 total minutes, qualified for most minutes for a male, 22 to 34 years of age. The T-shirts are on their way and will be given out at an upcoming City Council meeting. So please join us when you see that that's going to happen. We always take a picture. And that is all I have for this evening. Clerk?
I have nothing.
Thank you. Alderman? Alderman Davalos?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I just want to sort of say something left over from last week's meeting, and that has to do with, most of you all probably know that are paying attention, that the council is discerning and discussing video gaming to Warrenville. And there are six businesses that are interested in this, and we have some cities doing this, some cities not. So the staff is working very hard, and council is deciding and listening and weighing things. And the big discussion on that will be next Monday at our Committee of the Home meeting on public works and infrastructure. And in lieu of all this, and it's because sometimes it's very hard to be transparent about what we're doing all the time, I sort of started talking to people about what their thoughts were. And it was interesting, and some people were in favor of this, some people were not. But more than I would have realized, people did not understand this wasn't video gaming, that their kids are playing at home. And I was actually quite surprised when I explained that it was gambling that was happening and that we had to call it video gaming because the statutes call it that, and that's the name officially for it. But it is gambling. And so if you're interested in this or finding out more information about what we're talking about and input from staff, I'd encourage you, however you watch the meeting or come to the meeting, to tune in next Monday night at 7:00, and we'll be talking about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. I don't see anyone else, so we'll move on then to the City Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. As now is custom, just once a month, I participated in the virtual briefing from the DuPage County Health Department today. And as you know, we posted the information about the recommendations from the Centers for Disease Control and the Illinois Department of Public Health. They were, the county health department was echoing those recommendations that all people vaccinated or not should wear masks indoors. It is extremely disappointing we're slipping backwards. I understand the science and the concerns. There's a new serious variant of the coronavirus. This is just a nasty virulent virus, as we all should know, unless we've been, I don't know, hiding someplace all the last two years. It has got multiple variants. They're going through the Greek alphabet fairly quickly, I understand. I guess the first one now is called the Alpha Virus, Alpha variant. We got to Delta, which is extremely dangerous, and they've already on to some other letters. I'm not even keeping up that closely. But one of the key points, our health, our local county health department and the state and the Center for Disease Control and the Center for Infectious Diseases and all are emphasizing is anybody who is not vaccinated, please get vaccinated. I realize there are some people for medical reasons, others that cannot. But if you're able and you're not, you're still undecided, don't trust us. We're with the government. You're not trusting all the other government officials. So go to your doctor, talk to your physician, get the information, but please listen to reasonable sources. Rumors and comments and social media stuff is not necessarily verified information. In fact, if you don't believe the media, you don't listen to government, talk to your private doctor, get their advice on it, and please follow that. It's very important we get more people vaccinated because the more people that are hosts for this disease, the more it's going to continue to carry on. And the longer we're going to be wearing masks, and I'm hoping, I'm hoping, I think with everybody in the room and everybody in the city, we don't have to start shutting things down again and limiting because I don't know if the economy and private businesses can handle that, along with your friends, your family, your health people. I have grandchildren who can not be vaccinated, and I hope that they don't ever catch this because it's becoming more serious for young people. So I will get off my soap pockets. Thank you.
Well said, John. The other thing is that wearing a mask now is even more important for others than yourself. As it has been discovered that with the Delta variant, that you can have been vaccinated, and you can still carry that in your system and give it to others. So wearing a mask, even if you've been vaccinated, is a way of showing consideration for your friends, your neighbors, and your family in indoor spaces where you're confined. So please use your good judgment and think about others and protecting them because if they haven't been vaccinated, they're potentially in a very dangerous situation. So thank you, John, for reminding us. City Attorney?
No substantive report, other than just to express my appreciation for the chance to be with you and thanks for the warm welcome to the city. So thank you.
Very good, Andrew. Glad to have you with us. We'll move on to the approval of the agenda for this evening. Alderman Widener, would you like to take care of that motion?
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the agenda for the August 2nd, 2021 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second.
Second by Alderman Davalos. Any changes or comments on the agenda? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman Anderson, did you have your hand up?
No, it's a voting aye.
Okay, thank you. The agenda is approved as presented for this evening. We have two sets of minutes that also need approval. Alderman Widener?
Thank you. I move to approve the minutes of the July 19th, 2021 City Council Regular Meeting and to approve the minutes of the July 26th, 2021 Public Safety and Finance Committee Meeting.
Second.
Second again by Alderman Davalos. Any discussion of those minutes? Again, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and the minutes are approved. The consent agenda for this evening. Item 6A, Accept Plan Commission Recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance 02021-32 approving the West Mass Platte of Resubdivision at 3 South 505 Burke Avenue and waiving public improvement requirements for the, of the subdivision control ordinance. B, Accept Public Safety and Finance Committee Recommendation and Approve the Revisions of the Employee Mission Statement and the City's Vision and Value Statements. C, Accept Public Safety and Finance Committee Recommendation and Designate Alderman Berry to serve as the City Council liaison to the Bicycleist and Pedestrian Advisory Commission. D, Accept Mayor Bremel's Recommendation and Approve the Appointment of Harland Davis, excuse me, as Chairman of the Bicycleist and Pedestrian Advisory Commission for a term to expire April 30th, 2022. E, Accept Mayor Bremel's Recommendation and Approve the Appointment of Mark Hasbrik as Commissioner on the Bicycleist and Pedestrian Advisory Commission for a term to expire April 30th, 2024. F, Accept Mayor Bremel's Recommendation and Approve the Appointment of Jessica Tullier to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term expiring May 20th, 2024. G, Accept Mayor Bremel's Recommendation and Approve the Appointment of Mark Taylor to fill the Plan Commission Ward Four vacancy for a term expiring May 20th, 2024. H, Receive and File Minutes of the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Awareness Commission Meeting Held on July, excuse me, June 9th, 2021. I, Receive and File Minutes of the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals Meeting Held on July 22nd, 2021. J, Receive and File Report of Invoices Paid Up to July 28th, 2021 in the Amount of $80,162.14. And K, Authorized Expenditures for Invoices Due On or Before August 16th, 2021 in the Amount of $379,901.46.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented by Mayor David Bremel.
Second.
Second again by Alderman Davalos. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Chrisell?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Thank you. The agenda is approved as presented. We have one item under the regular agenda. Would someone like to make that motion, please? Alderman Widener, are you ready?
Certainly. I move to accept the staff recommendation and pass resolution R 2021-550, approving an amended policy concerning electronic attendance at City Council, City Council Committee, Plan Commission, and Zoning Board of Appeals Meetings.
Second.
A motion and a second. Discussion will begin with our Community and Economic Development Director, Ron Mensur. Good evening, Ron.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you. At the Plan Commission level, we've had several discussions in the last few months about the possibility and feasibility of extending the City Council's virtual meeting attendance policy to cover the Plan Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals. We've discussed it internally at City Hall, and from a staff perspective, believe we have the technical and staffing capacity and experience to implement that policy effectively at the Plan Commission level. Recently, we've had a longtime veteran Plan Commission member that has been unable to attend Plan Commission meetings in person. And the reason why is one of the reasons that is covered by the policy. So by extending the policy to cover the Plan Commission, that individual would be able to resume attendance at Plan Commission meetings remotely, at least for the time being. So I've discussed it with the mayor, discussed it with the Plan Commission Chairman, and both of those individuals concur with staff that this would be an appropriate action at this point in time, and the staff is recommending approval of an extension of the policy to cover the Plan Commission.
Excellent. Thank you, Ron. Any discussion or questions for Ron? Alderman Goodman?
So when a Plan Commission member, for example, or a member of the City Council has a longstanding issue, is it our feeling that we still need to follow this, I suppose, somewhat repetitive procedure of filling out notices to the clerk in writing? Since we're revisiting this policy to make a few changes, I wondered if staff had considered making any additional changes.
I'll give that to Administrator Coakley because I believe that has been discussed.
Excuse me. The first part of the question, the answer is yes, that everyone would still be required to fill out information for each meeting. Now, they can fill it out for more meet, multiple meetings at a time. For example, Alderman Anderson filled out that request for all of the July meetings at one time. They don't have to do it each meeting ahead of time. It's just a requirement to get the notice in, in writing, up to at least four hours before the start of the meeting to the city clerk. I believe that some of that is required by the statute, so I hope Andrew is up to speed on that from Brooke. Brooke wrote all of this for us and has worked with us on this revised policy, but the same rules would apply. So if I can defer to Andrew?
Andrew?
Certainly. And just to build on that point, it is part of the Open Meetings Act process that what is unfortunately a repetitive proceeding does need to take place in your meeting itself, just to memorialize for the record the reasons why the member must be absent and to state that it fits one of the applicable reasons. So I think the approach that the city has taken in terms of streamlining the process up to that point, in terms of being able to file notices that could cover multiple meetings, are a good proactive way to kind of limit the burden of doing that each time. But it is a best practice in terms of compliance with the Open Meetings Act to have that memorialization each meeting, even though it is repetitive and takes a little chunk out of each of your meetings.
Andrew, you got to talk right into the mic when you're talking.
Oh, my apologies.
I didn't want to interrupt you, but these are directional, I guess, not...
Understood. If anyone didn't hear that, I'm happy to repeat it. But essentially, the bottom line is that it is for the process of completing the requirements under the Open Meetings Act and memorializing that persons who are attending by virtual means are doing so consistently, both with the statute and with your policy.
Okay, Alderman Goodman?
And just to follow up on that, since most people who need to attend remotely are absent, then is it also in the statute that the notice has to be in writing and can't be electronic? Or does writing include electronic communications in its definition?
I think in terms of the physical writing, that is something that my sense is could, that I'm not aware that the Open Meetings Act specifically requires it on a physical piece of paper, and that while, in my experience, I have seen policies that are implemented in different ways. Some do allow the equivalent of a piece of electronic mail. Some do require them in writing. My sense is that that writing should be able, at some level, to encompass a digital writing such as an email. The challenge there is a signature as well. There's, it can be difficult to reach a consensus about when an electronic signature is acceptable. So a written document with a signature is always going to be the most clearly identified and defensible means of participating in that manner.
Okay. Seems, you know, a little bit onerous, but if it hasn't caused problems so far, then hopefully it won't cause problems with implementation at the Plan Commission level. And if we could loosen it up just to include electronics in the definition, I think that would probably be fine. Most people in my legal practice do sign things electronically these days, and there are plenty of laws governing the ways in which that is quite legal, so.
Okay, thank you, Alderman. City Administrator Coakley?
Unless there's a motion to delay this, I would suggest that you may want to pass this tonight, and then we could ask the City Attorney to provide more detailed opinion on that, that very question for the future, and then it could be amended again. But I have worked with Brooke quite a bit on, this is all new to us. It was passed right before COVID, of course, and it's just being used recently and now expanding. So we're kind of learning as we go along as well. But she was very clear, somewhat based on the policy, but also on the state law, from my interpretation, I'm not the attorney, I don't even have a law degree, and that we needed to follow at least the form and substance of the attachment. And I certainly understand what Andrew is saying, the clarity, having it signed, and I don't know if electronic signature. But we can ask Brooke to give us more opinion or have Andrew in her absence or somebody before the next council meeting, and then we could look at it further. But probably it would be helpful for Plan Commission. They're having some difficulty with, they've got someone who needs to attend remotely, and that would provide that access in the, certainly by this current policy.
Okay.
I don't oppose passing the ordinance as it's currently phrased. I don't think it's urgent to change it. It just seems like it would be a reasonable change to make.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can I do this voice vote?
You could, you could do it by voice vote, or you actually have your option. You can do a voice vote or roll call, but it's just to the extent anyone opposes, we just maybe revert to a roll call vote in case anyone opposes.
Let's do a roll call. Thank you.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Chrisell?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Ron, for bringing that forward. We have nothing under unfinished business, nothing under new business, no need for a closed session. So who would like to do the honors? Alderman Widener has his hand on the button.
I'd like to say read my lips, but I don't think you can. I move to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Alderman Goodman. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you so much for your attendance, and we'll see you next time.